Hi, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for December 5th, 2016. May I have a roll call vote, please? Not a vote, may I have a roll call, please? No vote.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mrs. Carling?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get down to business, I'd like to say something about a great man. Dick Block, our most recent District 115 Board President, passed away last night. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing Dick for very long, but he was one of those people that made an impact. He wasn't loud or boisterous in his Louisiana drawl, hid his intellect and serious nature. Dick loved to tell stories and his characters and accent kept you engaged. He was whip-smart, extremely kind, and cared about his family and his community, especially the high school. He taught me how to do this. He calmly answered all my stupid questions, kept telling me what was important, and confidently assured me that my five months of board experience would make me a fine president. I can still see his sly smile when he said that. The last time I saw Dick was with his wife Debbie at sunset. He looked great. He had just beat a cancer relapse. I could tell by the look on Debbie's face that his fight wasn't over. But Dick wanted to talk about me, my family, the high school. With everything he was fighting, he was concerned about me. His awe-shucks demeanor hid his tenacity, but if you spent time with him, which was a gift I'll always treasure, you knew he was a fighter. That's how I want to remember Dick. So, back to business. I can't believe it's already December. Yesterday's snow reminded us all that winter's here, December's here. The year flies by also when you measure it in board meetings. Only 11 meetings, and it's already December. The holidays and year-end are a busy time. Please slow down, give yourself a break, and show gratitude when you can. "The Board, Mike, Dr. Holland, and the staff have spent a lot of time this calendar year focusing on district-wide and school goals. We've spent more than we planned, but it's important and worth every minute of the extra time to ensure we get the right goals, metrics, and focus." We're going to talk about that tonight, a little bit. We're also going to hear a report on college acceptance and college readiness. "We have a stated, very important goal that all, not some, or 85% of LFHS high school students be college and career-ready. Our aspirational vision, that can't be repeated often enough, 'prepare all students to make a difference in their world,' is the headline preceding that goal." It's an understatement to say the college acceptance process has changed. A lot. I was probably one of the many who didn't realize the change until my daughters started thinking about college. I still remember the meeting with Jackie, with Courtney, when she was a sophomore. The process takes more time, is loaded with anxiety and excitement, including the dreaded, "What if I don't get into the right school, Dad?" The question's always stated calmly and rationally by your child, followed by a thoughtful pro-con analysis. Not exactly. I wish all our students could travel forward in time, maybe four years from junior year, for one day. They'll see that it will be okay. More than okay. Actually, pretty great. LFHS, your parents, your teachers, this community and your support system will prepare you for college and what comes next. You just don't know it yet. The way kids prepare for post-high school has also changed. The skills and attributes necessary to be college and career-ready have changed, and the pace have changed, like most things, is quickening. Again, rest assured, Lake Forest High School is on it. Mr. Simick, Shayla, and their team are identifying and focusing on what it takes to be a successful scout, what skills and attributes are needed to be college and career-ready, and how do we support our students to get them there. Our job, the Board's job, is to make sure the resources, systems, and focus are in place, the right goals and the right metrics. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Markison. And I too would like to pass on some thoughts about Mr. Block. As news of Dick Block's passing found its way around our communities, his fellow board members reached out to share their thoughts about Dick. These are folks that used to be on the Board that had served many years with Dick. One shared, "I remember his passion for Lake Forest High School and how he was always sharing Louisiana charm with our community. Sharing, for Dick, sometimes meant regaling all who would hear with stories and criticisms. Other times, it was trying to get us to acquire a taste for Hog's Head Cheese, one of the most notorious of culinary delights of his native region. Dick's passing is a great loss to the communities. He was a very proud community father and treasured his community service to the caucus system in which he strongly believed and served as its president, and particularly of the eight years he devoted to Lake Forest High School, first as trustee and finally as a strong and capable Board President. More than anything else, however, Dick was a very devoted family person. We will remember Dick as a devoted dad and a husband and generous with his time. I am deeply saddened at his passing and wish the family peace and joy in celebrating his life. He was a colorful guy and left much to celebrate, and he was a success in life's greatest challenge and leaves much for us to miss." Other things going on in the district, we've had a successful showing of Screenagers, which is a movie, that's a piece that we can rent through our partnership with Lead, had a sizable crowd that attended at the John Hughes Theater. Screenagers is about the addiction, if you will, of our students. I'm looking over at some of our kids now. I'm happy to see they're not looking at their phones, thank you very much. But the way that our interaction with our devices has changed life as we know it and how to manage our relationships more effectively. The other thing that happened is I took a road trip with Director of Lead, Andy Duran, to go visit an author, Julie Lithcott Tames, who authored the book How to Raise an Adult, and we are working on bringing her to our community. She's a former dean of students at Stanford and reflected on what she had learned about how to be a successful student at Stanford and also a successful person in life, and tells very compelling stories about her own raising of her own children and the expectations that adults sometimes place on kids and the lack of expectation that adults sometimes place on kids for things that they should be able to do for themselves. So, very compelling speaker. Also, we have hosted our All Administrative Workshop. It's something that is new for this year. So, the collective administrators for 67 and 115, we meet in this room and work on common problems. This is in addition to other meetings that we have with District 65. We have a close collaboration with them. This is the time of year where we have end-of-year celebrations, where we have an opportunity to thank people that have supported us. The APT Holiday Celebration takes place this week and look forward to extending our appreciation to them for their hard work with us. Thank you. And I forgot to go to Dr. Holland first. I was so... You guys were outdone by Mr. Block. I'm sorry about that, but I was eager to share my thoughts about Mr. Block. Sorry about skipping over you initially. So, Dr. Holland?
Good evening. I'm going to pass it over to Drew and Lauren.
Hello. First and foremost, we want to apologize for missing the last meeting. We were very busy with school and college applications, as you mentioned, all came up at once, but we're here now.
And Lauren, we had a big party because you're a state champion field hockey player, and unfortunately, we weren't able to give you the credit.
Thank you. So, Student Council has also had a busy fall and start of the winter season. Back in October, we had an All Student Council car wash, which went very well despite the chilly weather. We made $2,000 in total. $500 are going to each graduating class. And due to our success and the great time that we had, we're hoping to host a car wash next year in a little bit of warmer weather, so hopefully more happy participation. It was a long day, and more people hopefully will show up, too. In November, we had our annual canned food drive for Shields Township. And yesterday, about 20 students, we met at the Lake Bluff Target and went shopping for our Four Adopt a Family families. That was a great experience. It's always heartwarming and fun. We go shop for, we have the wish list for each kid in the different families, and then we all wrapped the presents together for them to be delivered. At our most recent overall club meeting, we met with the head chef of the cafeteria and coffee shop to discuss feedback for how that's been going. We also revealed the new name that was voted on by the students for the coffee shop. It's dubbed "The Grind," so you'll maybe hear kids say, "I'll see you at The Grind today after school." And a lot of that praise for the food and drinks was about the muffins and the baked goods are a big hit, the tea selection is great, and students are happy with the location of the coffee shop and the hours of operation. It's nice that it stays open later versus the cafeteria closes at 1:00 still, so it's nice if you need an after-school snack or later in the day. Suggestions included adding more fruit to the smoothies, maybe adding a couple more healthy options, including dairy-free and gluten-free items, increasing the amount of breakfast items and adding more decoration to the room because it's nice in there, but it's kind of boring. So, there's been talk of the art club maybe doing a mural for in there, and also maybe adding a chalkboard wall that we could use as a news forum bulletin board for clubs and other students to write notes as a new outlet. Andrew?
And to Andrew, you guys did really well.
Okay. As for the month of December, Student Council is planning our traditional Holiday Spirit Week, which is the week before winter break, which includes Pyjama Day, Ugly Sweater Day, White Out Blizzard Day, Winter Sports Day, and All-Out Holiday, which is always a fun time to show our school spirit with our students and staff. Also, coming up is our Winter Formal turnabout, which is January 21st. The freshman class and sophomore cabinets have had successful fundraisers over the past couple months, including pizza sales and bake sales and whatnot. The sophomore class also hosted a Little Scouts Halloween Party, which was a big success. And I know all the little kids really enjoyed it. The junior class has been working hard for, planning for prom this year. There is an art contest for the T-shirt, and they decided on a theme this year, so the theme for prom is Mount Olympus, a night in the clouds. And also, the senior classes discussing plans for the senior class gift and a potential schedule for senior-themed Thursdays to keep up with the school spirit. Lastly, the senior cabinet is also discussing a Hot Chocolate Day for students, a fun school spirit event to keep up the cheery moods in the winter around finals.
You're welcome.
So, thank you. Just to add on, our art club is actually in the process of designing the mural, so that's happening with Mrs. Bielski. Connected with what the students were mentioning, with the change of seasons comes a change in our athletic and extracurricular activities. We have all of our events on our calendar, and we want to continue to encourage the school community to come out to art showcases, different concerts and sporting events, and to cheer our kids on. As many know, exams are coming up in January. January 10th through 12th, we'll have our semester exams. More information should be on the website before the end of the week. I know we're working on clearing up that communication and getting something out. Similar to the past two years, students will take exams with their classroom teachers. Students only have to be in the building during the time of their exam. Food services will be open along with our coffee shop. We will continue to communicate out regarding accommodations for students with IUPs or 504 plans, and as normal, we'll continue to have makeup days on Thursday and Friday mornings. We're also working, finalizing our transportation routes and those plans, and all of that will be up on the website within the next day or two. Also, everyone knows that last year, we opened up some conversations about moving exams before winter break. Even though we decided not to move forward with those conversations, one thing we did commit to was in developing our calendars moving forward to think about creating a calendar where when students come back from break, there's some time in between when they return and when exams are, just to support conversations with our faculty as well as families regarding the importance of having a true break, which was something that overwhelmingly in all of the meetings came out. Concerns around students taking textbooks and a ton of materials on different vacations and not really having time with their families. So, that's something that we remembered and will continue to keep at the forefront of those conversations, even though a decision was made to hold on those conversations until we have the capacity to facilitate them in a more meaningful way. In terms of our Schedule Committee, our Schedule Committee has met throughout the year. As many remember, our Schedule Committee is made up of faculty members and administrators. We have gone through a process of hosting parent and community meetings. We've had meetings with our support staff. We've had meetings with our faculty. Our students have a survey that we're asking them to complete. Embedded in the survey, because we know surveys are very impersonal, we didn't want to encroach on our students and schedule all of these meetings without their input, but we do ask in the survey if students would be willing to meet in small focus groups so we can hear firsthand some of their feedback around the new schedule. We're asking all students to complete the survey by December 9th, and we'll go through a process of scheduling the small group meetings. At that point, we would have received feedback from all of our stakeholder groups, and our committee reconvenes to talk about not just the groups in isolation of each other, but the collective feedback as well. Also, working with Ann to follow up on some of the questions, comments, concerns that were raised by our parent and community groups, to make sure that we have a platform on our website where we're answering questions and following up. For example, if there's concerns, if there are concerns around transportation, and there's questions that we need to follow up on, having a platform to communicate that information back out. We have engaged in a process of furthering our placement processes. This is also outlined in our strategic plan. A lot of this is around looking at our current process in place for incoming freshmen and thinking about ways to create a more comprehensive model. In most districts, we took inventory of the districts around us, as well as, we always continue to look at best practices related to everything that we're doing. But we implemented this year, in relation to the adoption of our SAT suite, we implemented the PSAT 8-9. A part of our placement process includes looking at qualitative and quantitative data, not just using one data point, but engaging in a more holistic conversation. Teacher recommendations will still be used from our feeder teachers. The PSAT 8-9, we've implemented that as a data point, not the only point of data, in the process, just because it's best practice to at least have one consistent data point across all students. Right now and in the past, we've, depending on what the feeder districts wanted to give, there was never alignment between whether they gave Aspire, or they gave MAP, or they gave a different assessment. So, the PSAT 8-9 serves as one consistent data point. We'll continue to use the MAP scores, grades, and additional qualitative feedback from teachers. So, for the most part, our system remains very similar to the past, except we have one consistent data point that's also embedded. And we were very intentional about determining the use of the PSAT 8-9. We aren't interested in over-assessing students. And what I believe many of our, in talking with District 65 and District 67, what tends to happen is our feeder districts start to, and we all start to align our assessments. So, over time, some of the assessments that are given to some of the students in eighth grade are no longer necessary because we now have this common, consistent assessment that will be used in the high school. So, in many cases, feeder districts and our middle schools end up removing one of the assessments because this one is given. All that to say, we truly believe this is a more comprehensive model. It will continue to include conversations between students, parents, counselors, and instructional directors, as well as conversations with teachers from the middle schools. And a part of our conversation, a part of our model, is ensuring that we're having conversations about supports. And so, what supports, what does a student need to be successful in engaging in their courses? Additionally, and the counseling department really helps us a lot with these conversations just around balance, making sure that we're remembering that these are kids, and we have a wide range of different courses that might spark interest in new areas or might further growth and development in others, and that balance is at the forefront of those conversations. Lastly, or actually, second to last, I do want to mention that we went through a process with the Curriculum Committee of revising and adopting new courses. We're very excited about some of our revisions. Our revisions allow for our students to have more access to some of the classes in different content areas, access to some more of our elective courses. So, if I'm in Photo 3, I now have an opportunity to further that with Photo 4, and that is a part of the revision process. Additionally, you'll see more classes, bless you, offered in math, particularly our new course proposals and new courses create more opportunities for students to engage in math during their senior year. And that's a conversation that we've had here at the Board Table. We've moved forward with not just clarifying what the classes are by renaming some of them, but also offering different classes that are semester-long. So, I can take two different classes my senior year, one depending on the semester. Additionally, we have a couple of courses that further our work with STEAM or STEM, robotics, and allow our students to explore their interests there. We have an interdisciplinary course that's being offered between social studies and science. And one of the things that the entire community will be hearing more about that we're very excited about is the launch of a theater department. So, we are launching a theater department for next school year and working with Ann to schedule different informational events and community events to announce this program, to have some of our staff present, our students present, but to really lay out the scope of our new courses. We have three new courses that we'll be offering as a part of the department, and we'll talk more about the vision and for growth and expansion. But we will be offering Theater 1, Theater 2, and Stagecraft and Tech Design as our first courses in the department, so we're really excited about that. Lastly, I want to mention that we are planning an executive functions meeting for parents in partnership with Rush Neuro-Behavioral Center, currently is scheduled for February 2nd at 7:00 PM, and Dr. Georgia Bozadei will be the presenter, and will be sending out more communication, but it's going to be focused on executive functions and the teenage brain, and so we're excited about that as well. Thank you.
Actually, Shayla, I had one comment and one question. First of all, I thought that you and the other administrators and teachers at that District 65 Curriculum Night did awesome. You know, what was really, what was really nice to see is that she not only presented information in a cohesive and thorough manner, as did the math department head, but with a lot of questions, you guys just sometimes listened, and you let people voice their concerns, and they clearly understood that you heard them, just through your actions of stopping for a minute and listening. I thought that was really impressive and cool, and I wanted to thank you for that. And then I have a question. The PSAT, will ninth graders be taking the PSAT?
Yes. As a part of the district's adoption of the suite of assessments, in April, all of our freshmen, our sophomores, and our juniors will all be assessed in one of the assessments connected to the suite. I failed to mention that our adoption of that was not just, our adoption of the suite is supporting us in having a consistent data point for incoming eighth graders, but is also building our model around student growth, which was outlined in the work of our Joint Committee and PARA, which is required by the state, is actually built into our evaluation model. And so, over time, we should be able to not just predict student growth, expected student growth, but actually plan for it in our instructional, in our overall academic program.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Okay. Our first report is on college acceptance. Dr. Maher?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address the Board, bring some, I think, some really exciting information to share with you, again, about one of our key focuses is kids as they move on throughout, beyond high school, and where do they end up, and to also then provide an opportunity to answer any questions you might have. So, just to begin, just some basics here. Again, some favorite schools, both public and private, that our kids like to attend. University of Illinois continues to be the top public school, out of the four-year schools, the top public school. University of Wisconsin and Iowa have climbed up the ladder, replacing both Indiana and Missouri, and so those have been moved down a little bit. But again, university, maybe kids are a little bit closer to home with Wisconsin here. And then also, some changes on the private side. DePaul University and University of Dayton have all climbed up. Marquette is a school that, again, usually has been very popular, and it's still very popular, but it has moved down the scale here. It's also interesting to see Tulane was a popular choice for the class of 2016. And then I'd also like to comment that Northwestern has been a consistent, you know, we were always sending a large handful of kids to Northwestern University as well, and then Lake Forest College always remains a great choice for our students. Last year, when I made this report, there was a suggestion to consider the size of schools that our kids go to and to provide information. And so, our class of 2016, as you can see, these various breakdowns of size of enrollment, of student enrollment at various universities, is given to us through the National Center, I'm sorry, this is coming from the Student Clearing Warehouse, and they provide these particular breaks. And as we line up our kids from the class of 2016 in that data, you can see that a little over 50% of our kids choose to go to universities where the enrollment is 13,000 or larger. I mean, maybe different people have, what's a big university? I mean, that might be considered, some of our larger universities. And again, in schools that our kids choose to go to, 2,000 or fewer, again, a similar-sized school to our own Lake Forest, about 6% of kids. I want to make a comment here that the average student applies to approximately eight schools, getting accepted to a few of those, and so these are a pretty good representation of their choice of where they ultimately decide. And so, that's a pretty good reflection of what their wants are, I think, and that's, again, there's more to be studied on this particular topic, but I just wanted to give some background, again, in response to a question that I received last year. So, we've been involved with the National Student Clearing Warehouse for three years now. We import our data from the beginning with the class of 2009 and moving forward into their, into their program, and they match up, they make connections of where the kids went to school and where they continue on at school. They make three different reports throughout the year, so they adjust when a student transfer students and they get new information. This data continues to improve in its reliability and validity. They, again, they are, you know, it's not perfect because they match up birth dates, they match up names, if they have social security, they match up those things, and they do- they do their best to match where students are. And over time, I've found that their information is more and more correct when we confirm it with either the counselors or with what the students reported. As I go through this data too, I want to share with you that this is not the only way where we get data from where our students go. The students also meet with their counselors, the seniors meet with their counselors in May, and they have an interview process, and they do a self-report of where they're going to school at that time. Counselors know their kids extremely well, and so they can confirm whether that's an accurate self-report. We also get letters from some universities that say, you know, confirming that a student has gone to that university, or a student is not at that university. And so, we have ways of confirming the data that we're using here. And so, from the class of 20, this 2010, again, because they've been out for six years now, 81% of this cohort has graduated a degree in six or less years. You say six or less years, why so many? That is currently the data methodology that the, is used nationally. Again, this same proportion across the country is still around 60%. I do, if I, you know, if we've got some time later, I do have information about our students' graduation rates after four and five years. One thing that I noticed in the data this year, the retention rate for Lake Forest High School students, again, this is over the number of years now, from freshman to sophomore year is 95%. That's a very strong number. That's a good indication that the kids are, have made a good choice and are moving on in school. That's a, so to me, that really stood out as a, as a success out of the data that we collected. Okay? And again, some other, we've got two, again, we've got two years of students that have gone through this whole six-year process. This relates to the data that they gave, they give me. It's more complete for the classes that have been out for six years. And you can see the percentages broken down of our students, of our students that go to public or private schools. There's a higher rate of success of graduating within six years at the private schools, and then also in and out-of-state breakdowns for those two. We've also recently adopted in our strategic plan, the both, the college and career-ready indicators, this particular information is specifically the college-ready indicators. And again, these are ideas of what we can do with this data that we collect of where the kids go, by looking backwards to see how many of these particular indicators really tie in, have high correlation to that success, and which ones could we could aim at. There was a discussion about what metrics should we be using. And I really think that, as my suggestion, my recommendation, is that we consider how these, and are there other data that's collected through a student's progress through their, the high school's experience here at Lake Forest, how that connects with their success rate in graduating. This is a database that I believe that we could create. This is a database that you could ask a lot of questions of, and I think it'd be, it would really provide us with some great evidence of which programs are successful, which ones we should tweak to improve, and it would really provide a wealth of information to answer some of our critical questions. I think we're ahead of the ballgame on this. I've talked to other schools, many of them have not jumped on board with this data from the National Student, the National Student Clearing House. I think it's, it's been proven over time to be reliable, and we should, I'd recommend pursuing it. And just in a wrap-up here, so again, we like to understand all the overall patterns of where our kids go to school. We also want to understand the patterns of their, of what's helping them, or what's relation, relating to their college completion, and understanding those factors as we study that student success in college and college completion. And then finally, using that information to inform our future students and parents on what we've learned, and to make better decisions about college choice, or at least to inform them better. And so, I think all of this is the beginning of something very exciting for the high school, especially with the connection with ECR, and I, hopefully, we can learn a lot from it and put it all together. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. This, I agree, this is really a goldmine for assessing our educational programs, and I really appreciate all the data. I was interested to see the difference in the graduation rate at the kids going to private versus public, and I realize those are apples and oranges. I would also be interested, we sort of talked offline about this, but I'd also be interested to see the six-year success rate of students who go to larger schools versus smaller schools, because as an educator myself, I'm concerned about the quality of instruction in these huge undergraduate institutions, and the type of mentoring that they can get when there's 30,000 students as opposed to 5,000 students. So, if in the future you can get that kind of data, that'd be very valuable.
I think so, and we can also qualify it too with what, you know, there's, again, the number of kids in those classes, and those, is that connected, the size of their classes, based on how big the university is? I think there's a lot of different levels that we could pursue in order to help with, answer any of those questions. Sure?
Tom, just real quick, obviously, it's incredibly impressive that 100% of the class of 2010 is, that went to a private school graduated. My question though is, does that include if you went to a large public university and transferred to a private university within that four years? Where would I be in that data set?
I, no, I think that's just from that, their last year of where they graduated from.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily incorporate a transfer from?
That's right.
Okay.
And it could overstate the success of the private schools, vice versa too.
Tom, you said on the graduation in six-years cohort, it was 60% nationally?
Mm-hmm.
And so, are you pleased with our 81%? You know, our goal is to have everybody ready for career and college, so how does that 81, is that something we're working on? Is that an accepted number?
Personally, no, I don't think it's, I think we would expect there to be a higher number. I mean, you've still got, you know, 95% of our kids go to two- or four-year universities. And of that group, still, we're need, there's a significant number that aren't finishing. And I, no, I think we can improve on it. How does it compare to other schools that are similar to ours? Again, I don't, I, yeah, I think Stevenson is also on the front of measuring this information by doing, they have surveys that they send out to their, to their former students. And so, we can find, maybe that's an avenue to go to find out about that success, but no, I, I think it's a good number, it's, but I don't think it's really the best number. I think we can work on it. Okay?
I have one other question. Sorry, what does FAFSA completion, why is that a relevant data point? I couldn't figure it out.
That, that is an indicator from the, this is what the AASA, that, again, we've, that Shayla has introduced and we've adopted. It is a component actually for, I believe it's more for some schools that are not aware of the ability to get funding. And so, I think that for certain schools, and I could be incorrect, but there's, for certain schools, having the, knowing that the parents could be involved with completing this, also relates to more kids going to college, more kids completing college.
And that's what I assumed.
I'll just add on, I do want to just clarify this slide. We are actually looking at the national college and career readiness standards, and considering where our students are aligned with them, how they're measuring up. Because this conversation, what happens in one community plays out differently than the next, we are actually having a more contextual conversation around these indicators, not to just adopt something because it's framed nationally, but to start by looking at, if we have indicators, where are our students in alignment? And what we're finding, just on an initial look, is that our students are, of course, surpassing national standards. But, and then we're looking at what are their trends amongst the students that go to the high school, to create our own benchmarks that are context-specific and related to how we educate our students. And so, we're using the national standards to first see where our students are, and then we're working with ECR to determine our own Lake Forest High School benchmarks-related. One of the reasons why I know FAFSA's on there, because paying for school is a big deal. And so, that's one of the indicators, the more preparation, the more support families and students have with thinking about whether they can afford college and identifying different areas of support, the more likely they are to not just apply for schools, but also stay in schools. Because some students start in college, and then they, they leave because they can't afford it, or they transfer to somewhere else. So that's an indicator, it's not necessarily saying that a student has to complete everything, but it is an indicator that helps to frame what causes students to be successful in school, and part of that is having the financial assistance.
And along the same lines, Tom, with FAFSA, I know, starting January 1st, that's probably, you know, the dreaded part for the parents, you know, starting to?
Now it's an October 1st, it's already, it's already open.
Okay, I'm already behind the, yeah. But anyway, starting January 1st, does the high school provide any assistance? Because I know FAFSA, even if you are not requesting financial aid or tuition assistance, most schools, you still have to do it regardless.
Right, yes, we definitely encourage all of our parents to go through that process. The reason is that the university use it, use that information for their own scholarship determination. So even if maybe somebody here in this, won't qualify for the government money, they s- No, but I do want to, I do want to, yes, I, but I do, we do make that encouragement for all parents to complete it. But as far as, yes, we did run workshops where we had folks, both our counselors and folks from Lake, College of Lake County, to come in to help parents complete the process. There was also an informational meeting provided for in September as well, as this process is getting ramped up here. So yes, we did, we did provide those opportunities.
Okay, and you're going to do that in the future as well?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, we can certainly get that information out.
Hey, Tom, a question, I mean, we've heard, at a lot of different meetings, that, you know, not all of our kids are as ready for college as we'd like them to be. We're providing supports, we encourage, but still, 95% of our kids go to college. I mean, do we have any idea from this data or some other data about where those kids that we know aren't quite ready to go to college, where do they go, number one, and how do they do?
We, I mean, some of those students that don't, we don't list as that 95%, they've enlisted in the military. We did not have any individuals in the class of 2016 that enlisted, however, that does happen. We have students that go right into career. We only have a few kids, it's, it's, again, maybe 2% of students, well, that's obviously more than just a few, but a few percentage points where we have no plans, that get reported. And so, that, that group is somebody we are not aware of where they're going.
Question, I'm saying there's, there's different data points, that, you know, ACT is one criteria that we say, you know, if a kid doesn't get X score on the ACT test, ACT defines them as not being college-ready. We've, we've got other internal criteria that say, well, if kid isn't taking XYZ class in their senior year, they're probably not as ready for college as we'd like them to be. Do we, but most of those kids are going to college, other than the kids that don't have a plan, or go to the military. We know that 95% of our kids are going to a two-year or four-year college. So, do we have any data on those kids that aren't quite ready by our?
I apologize for not, not hearing that properly. Yes, I, we looked into students that scored, on their last ACT, scored a 21 or lower, and so that, in some respect, is a measure of college readiness. And of those students, again, more than 90% did go to a two- or four-year university. There are students that go, that are not receiving the plan, so they are going to universities. If I were to point out anything that's different from the general population, more of those students do go to a two-year college. But, but there's still, the number of, the proportion of them that are going to college is still very similar to the whole population. No, I don't, that I don't have quite yet, because we're just looking at those ACT scores in, in recent times. That's fine, those are good things to add. I, yes, no, I think that's good. I think Mrs. Berkshire and I were just kind of looking through some, some information online, and, and we found a 70% rate of retention for private schools. And so, so again, if we make assumptions about private schools, being 70%, that's a national average, right? And so, the 95% is pretty strong.
So I was curious about some of the data, and then I saw that you had students electing to go to Boston College, or the University of Oregon, or the University of Alabama, pretty far-flung. And it seemed like even on the University of Alabama, there's quite a number of requests to attend, or whatever, applications. Does that correlate to like those schools coming into the campus and talking to our kids? I mean, are there different like college nights where the different colleges come and present? Or what would, what would drive those schools out of a whole batch of other schools to rise up?
We're, we're very lucky, we get, we, we have approximately 200 schools that contact us, to set up appointments during the school day, to, to make presentations to our students. We have a few, handful of schools that come in the evenings to do, to do a more broad presentation. So, universities want Lake Forest High School kids, and so they come here to meet them and to, to talk about their programs. I don't know, I don't, I don't have proof of this, but I, but as I send my own kids off to college, a university like Alabama stipulates very clearly what percentage of, of a scholarship they would give based on either an ACT score or a GPA. And so, that, that's also very enticing for, for students and parents alike to know ahead of, you know, what is, what are the rules of the game? And so, more and more schools are actually promoting those different rates online very openly. That, that might be a reason why there's a push to go to a school like that.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Guys, thanks, Tom.
All right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So next, are there any committee reports?
Yes, Education Committee met on November 22nd, and our first report presentation was by three senior students who have developed a really impressive proposal to put solar panels on the roof of the high school. They've been working under Mrs. Davenport's guidance, and made a, a very strong case for the, both financial and carbon savings, as well as educational benefits of the solar panels. Can be used by science and math classes to measure various data, can fit into the whole business incubator program. So, the committee was very impressed, and we're hoping that that will move along in some other financial planning for the board. We also were introduced to Jenny Sterpen, who's the new Director of Special Education, and she talked about some of her goals for the year, and explained to us the benefits of inclusion and of peer support for, for students, and some of the benefits like attendance and test scores. And so, she outlined her plans for changes in the support structure and professional development, as well as better transition of eighth graders into the high school with special education requirements. And last, we heard from Dr. Holland, who had begun a presentation at our prior meeting, and was able to finish up her presentation of the, of the goals for the year, which included various curricular enhancements, this focus on career readiness, including some of the executive skills that she was telling us about, and some of the life readiness goals, the various literacies that we hope to instill in our students beyond classroom, like, things like financial literacy, media literacy, and so on. So, our next meeting will be on February 14th.
For Finance and Ops?
Finance and Operations did not meet. Our next meeting, right now, is, is formally scheduled for January 25th, 2017. We may have an interim meeting, we're talking about that now, we'll make sure the public gets fair notice, so that it's properly posted. I would like to make a quick comment about my friend Dick Block. I had the privilege of taking over Finance and Ops. I had the privilege of taking over Finance and Ops from Dick as the leader. And he clearly was a card-carrying member of the good guy club and a true gentleman, so he will be missed by all of us.
Liaison reports, Sally, do you want to give an EdRed report first before, I won't forget about you, Ted?
The weekend of November 18th, I attended what's called the Three Eyes Conference, the Joint Annual Conference of the Illinois Association of School Boards, as well as IASA and IS, IASBO, of which Jen Herms is the current president. I was there with Mr. Simic and also two members of the District 67 Board. I focused my time on attending meetings regarding education funding reform, and I'm gonna keep it brief. I want to mention one other thing. So one of the cool things about this conference, in addition to the fact that it's terrific to hear from other school boards about what they're facing, and to certainly instill in me a sense of gratitude at all of the sort of bounty that Lake Forest enjoys. We also saw a presentation in a general session by a fellow named Mawi Asgadam, I'm sure I've mispronounced that, who is an education, who educates educators and students. He was a refugee from Ethiopia who, by way of the Sudan, was ultimately settled in Wheaton, Illinois, where he grew up, and then attended Harvard University, and he now does programs for schools. He made us promise to do two things as we left, and one of the things he made us promise to do was to see everyone in the school, and that's one of the things that he pushes really hard with the populations that he addresses. And the connection that was made for me immediately was Dr. Holland initiating, putting the birthdays of the students in the, on the whiteboard when you walk into the main hallway. I've always been charmed by that, but I was never able to put my finger on what charms me about that. And it's that it's such a small but profound way of seeing everyone, seeing every student in the school, so thank you for that. Two things you need to keep in mind, there are sort of two different things going on here. The most important is that the commission that was put together by Governor Roner, pardon me for my cold, the School Funding Reform Commission is still hot at work. And I got to see three different panels of legislators who are on that committee. And here are the takeaways that we all need to be aware of. They are fully committed to walking out of that commission on February 1st with a bipartisan proposed bill on education funding reform in Illinois. What that means is that they are intending that it will cover all of the pieces of the puzzle. And that includes pension funding for school districts, as the state pushes that to the school districts to cover, workers' comp issues, tax caps, and potentially mandate relief, and I'll frankly believe that when I see it, but hopefully that's in the mix. The first piece is that they will walk out arm-in-arm with what they are all willing to support. And yet that appears to be the easiest part of their burden. Because what happens after that is they hand it over to the five leaders of the state legislature, Governor Roner, and the majority and minority leaders of the House Senate and the House Representatives. And they have to do what they call the hard sell among those five leaders to convince them that this is the bipartisan bill, the one and only bipartisan bill, that they need everyone to lock arms around and push through. And I'm going to give you my personal opinion, having watched six very impressive bipartisan legislators who have been working clearly very hard and are very committed to this process. I walked away feeling like they were not particularly optimistic that they're gonna get past that, that five people, that they need to get to agree for the hard sell. I hope I'm wrong, but they have told us that what will happen is it will come out on February 1st. It will go into that discussion amongst the leadership of Illinois's government, and then it'll supposedly wend its way toward a vote in the spring. So stay tuned.
We will, a lot there. Ted, is there a NSSCD liaison report?
Nothing to report from NSSCD, except the next meeting will be December 14th in Highland Park, 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to the action items. First, guys and gals, stop me if I don't obey my rule here. I'm gonna ask for a motion, and a second, and then discussion. And that's where I'll ask members of management to present information. So the first item on the agenda of action items is the adoption of our 2016 levy. May I have a motion to adopt the 2016 levy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the 2016 levy.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Jen, is there anything you'd like to say about the levy, any changes from last month, anything new that we should know?
Just that there are exactly no changes from what you tentatively approved in November.
And it's been on display for 30 days per law. So any other discussion from any other board members on the levy that we all saw twice now? Okay, we beat it pretty hard at the Finance Committee and, okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, approval of Exhibit A of the delineating agreement for 2016 and 17 on Superintendent Mike Simic's goals. First, I'll ask for a motion to approve Exhibit A of the delineating agreement.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve Exhibit A of the delineating agreement, 2016-17 Superintendent Goals.
Second?
Second.
Dave, you want to say a little bit about this process?
Yeah, so Mike Simic has been working against vision, mission, and strategic plan for some time. The, the board has been working over the past few months to work within those parameters that he's always been working to define some goals with a little bit tighter and more immediate metrics to it. So the board and Mike have been sharing some exchanges over what we thought we should define. Obviously, a few key points like communication and student performance and achievement across all student cohorts. And we pretty much have, have narrowed it down and defined that to the extent we could for this year, with some type metrics based on things like ACRE and some of the different reports you'll see throughout the year. So I thought that Mike was very forthcoming with what he thought was important, and I think the board communicated some of the things that we wanted to see the most. And I think the document we landed on is a good guidepost along that way. And our attempt is just to make sure that through this document and documents like it and exchanges that occurred with, with Mike, that we increase the efficacy of the board and Mike working together and support everybody involved for better overall outcomes, and that's what I think we did.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Dave, I want to thank you personally for taking all of our feedback that was coming in a million different directions at a lot of different times and consolidating that and using your personal and business experience to bring this home. So thank you very much. So we have a second, Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of pay application number five on the East Campus construction in the amount of $52,989.07. May I have a motion to approve pay application number five?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve pay application number five in the amount of $52,989.07.
A second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll make one. I mean, the draw that we're given in our board packet is very comprehensive, a little difficult to review sometimes. I've had some exchanges with, with Jen over the last few days, just to clarify. The bottom line is we've reported, I think as Mr. Powers reported at the last meeting, we're on budget and on time with our approved construction at the East Campus in total of $1,120,000. I think the plan right now is we will be slightly less than that and everything will be completed on time. So may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement for sharing of student data between Lake Bluff District 1, District 65 and Lake Forest High School for educational purposes. May I have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for sharing of student data between Lake Bluff 65 and Lake Forest High School?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the intergovernmental agreement for the sharing of student data between Lake Bluff School District 65 and Lake Forest High School for educational purposes.
Second?
Second.
Mike or Jen, do you want to explain what this is about, just so we all know?
Sure can, so this is, this is an agreement that the Lake Bluff Board has already approved. And that is the sharing of data back in, to the high school on District 65 students. So when we look at whether it be student placement in courses, whether it be looking at student growth, ACRE takes all of this data. ACRE is a partner with District 65 as well and has been for quite some time. They are, they have just approved this agreement for 65 to share data with 115. What's important with an intergovernmental agreement like this is that both sides must approve it because there are certain boundaries. You may do this with the data, you may not do that with the data, and so on. So it, it is, it is mutual. So they have approved their end of it, 67 approved theirs the year before, 65 moved on it this year. And so we look forward to completing this so that we have a larger dataset.
Any comments, questions, thoughts?
I have one that I had asked you and gotten some feedback, and it also, I think, relates to Dr. Holland's comments about using the 8-9 PSAT. How does this work with St. Mary's, which I think is the third-largest feeder school? And do they have, do we have similar data-sharing arrangements with them? Does their data match up with what we get from the, the public school feeder schools?
So in having a more defined process, we are very clear about what, about the information that we're asking of all of our feeder schools and districts. We've partnered, I think we've done a great job with extending our outreach and partnering with St. Mary's as well, as well as Country Day in our conversations. So they've been included, we meet with their staff, their principals, their heads of schools, similar to the same way we do with 65 and 67. We also talk about the alignment of assessments, as well as we've engaged in conversations around what data we're agreeing to share to ensure that the transition of all students, and I'll specify students from St. Mary's, is a smooth transition. We also, similar to what we do with 65 and 67, answer questions regarding the success of students when they get here. Because sometimes there's, for good, bad, indifferent, true or false, there's assumptions that our communication is a lot better with 65 and 67. And we own that we identify areas to improve with all of our feeder schools, and so working with them has been important. Part of the reason why we host it, some districts have asked the feeder schools or the center schools to host that assessment. So for example, they would be required or asked to give the PSAT 8-9. Some districts in more comprehensive or unit districts go that route. It's a little harder in our situation, so that's part of the reason why we decided to host the assessment, to make sure that all students who have any interest in coming to the high school could take it with us. And we also have arrangements made for students who maybe make, and families who make those decisions later. We don't give a spire, and that's what's given in St. Mary's. And so part of our reason for having one consistent one is to support that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is our Human Resources Report. First, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Sally, you don't have to do this anymore, you could just, you have a bad cold, so you could just say second from now on, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I know there were some questions going back and forth over the last couple of days. I just want to make sure everyone got their questions answered. Are there any thoughts, questions, and anything? None, okay. So may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We grouped some things under the consent agenda, and I'll remind everybody that any item may be removed from the consent agenda and discussed at the request of any board member. So may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, including the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for October 2016, the acknowledgement of Jim and Gloria Morris donation of a bass boat, the acknowledgement of Tim Richmond donation of a multi-sport netted backstop, the acknowledgement of Deborah Tagliaferro donation of a Pacific weight training machine, the minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, November 7th, 2016, minutes of an exec session, November 7th, 2016, minutes of an exec session, November 10th, 2016, disposal of, excuse me, of audio recordings, audio recordings from March 5th, 2015. That's it. So may I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Two seconds, second and a third. So any comments, thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I was just curious with the bass boat that's gonna be used by the bass team?
I think that was the most common question this, this week. We have a bass fishing team.
Now, that's just a club, I assume. How, are, is the insurance, those items covered under our umbrella policy?
Yes, before we actually accepted the donation, we did talk to our insurance company.
Okay, and how are they gonna get the boat to and fro, is it one of the...
They have the option of using one of our trucks, they also have the option of using the sponsor truck, and we also check the insurance coverage if they choose to do either of those.
They don't just fish on Lake Albus, right there?
Okay. We had a, we got a second? Did we get a second, Janice? Okay, two seconds, that's right, okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We had two FOIA requests this past month, one from Elizabeth Gordon, non-resident, and another from the Better Government Association. Four announcements, Sunday, December 11th, 2016, is one of the holiday concerts that Dr. Holland talked about, and a spaghetti dinner in the cafeteria and at RMA at 3:00 PM. December 19th through January 2nd is winter break. School reopens on Tuesday, January 3rd. And then on Monday, January 9th, we're right back here for our next Board of Education meeting at 6:30 PM in the same room. Mr. Simic, you got one?
I have one additional announcement from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Like to congratulate Sally Davis on completing her core workshops and have forwarded you a nice Leader Shop Parker pen.
Wait a minute, that, when I passed the course, we didn't get any gifts.
You gotta take all the core requirements, I guess.
I don't think we went to all three, she went, she went to all three, so... May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.